The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education Regular Board Meeting for Tuesday, November 12, 2019 will please come to order and will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Eric Brown.
Here.
Lynda Cohen.
Here.
Andrea Keen.
Here.
Benita Lucky.
Here.
Cheryl Polzin.
Here.
Chris McCullough here. Sarah Johansson.
Here.
And Chase Anderson.
Here.
All right, thank you so much and welcome everyone. The first item on our agenda and the first order of business this evening is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or a citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. The consent agenda items are listed in the board packet and the recommended action is to approve the agenda and the consent agenda items. So a motion to that effect.
I so moved.
Second? All right, it's been moved in second and there's no discussion on the consent agenda and it's a roll call vote.
Lynda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you and now we have an agenda. And I forgot to ask, the first item on our agenda is a report from the Student Council and he's here! Thank you, sorry. All right. Thank you Matt for joining us this evening.
All right, hello, my name's Matt Lawrence and I'm the Senior Vice President. I'll just be recapping some school news and highlighting some upcoming events as well. So just some general school news, we ended up, or we ended last, the first term last Wednesday and we are off to a smooth start to Term Two. Now, activity news, the Student Council is doing our winter fundraiser right now, Adopt a Family. I'm co-chairing that event and we are adopting a number of families from IOCP. This year it's 50 individuals in need. And as a Student Council, we are raising money and on our shopping day, the Student Council will buy and wrap gifts, then give them to the IOCP. These gifts include things such as blankets or winter jackets. Our contribution to IOCP from this fundraiser is very important for the people in our community in need. Our goal this year is to raise at least $3,000 and in recent years, we've raised far more than our goal and this year should be similar. In NHS News, the National Honor Society is putting on an event called Wayzata Idol held on November 26th. Students will be able to sing in a competition to see who will become the next Wayzata Idol. NHS will also be hosting a fall food drive at the end of this month. Now some fine arts news, the marching band went to Orlando and had a very successful tour down there. We performed at a couple of different venues including Universal Studios and Magic Kingdom. The band also performed at an indoor concert held at the high school on November 2nd. It included the ninth grade bands as well as the marching band. In the Theater Department, the Fall Musical is Legally Blonde. It is currently showing and will be showing up until the 16th. The Theater Department is really proud of the production of this musical and they encourage others to come and see their performance. They have shows on the 14th, 15th, and 16th at 7:00 PM at the high school. Now some sports news, congratulations to Josh Golbis for his first place finish at the National Rowing Regatta, the head of the Charles. He competed against dozens of the best rowers in the nation. Also congratulations to the girls swim and dive for keeping the tradition as champions in the 5AA section. They'll move on to the state meet now coming up. The girls volleyball team are also champions. They competed in the state tournament and came back with the first place finish. The football team is moving on to the section semifinals this Friday against Lakeville South. The game will be held at the US Bank Stadium. All right, that is all I have for school news. Thank you.
Thank you Matt. Okay, and the next item on our agenda are some recognitions, so I will join Dr. Anderson at the podium.
Good evening everybody and welcome. My name is Chase Anderson, I'm the Superintendent for the School District and it's always my honor to convene the recognition portion of our school board meeting. I'd like to welcome all of you, we have a number of recognitions this evening including three staff recognitions, Employee of the Month, and of course, many of you are here tonight for the wonderful recognition of our National Merit semifinalists, so I'd like to welcome all of you on this early winter night. Aren't you glad that winter arrived early this year? Hopefully we'll get a little bit of a rebound and a reprieve from that. At this time, I would like to welcome forward, or invite forward, our first Employee of the Month from Oakwood Elementary, Sue Windrell. Congratulations. I'm going to give Sue an opportunity to make a few comments here in a moment, but first I'd like to read the script that was submitted on her behalf as her nominations. Congratulations to the Wayzata Public Schools October Employee of the Month from Oakwood Elementary. It's our honor to recognize Sue Windrell, who has been a special education paraprofessional at Oakwood since 2008. It's been a pleasure to know Sue and work with her as she is a constant professional. She has a true gift when it comes to working with young children. She is passionate about the kids she works with and their biggest advocate. Sue has a great attitude and can problem solve on the fly. She puts students' needs first and works hard to get to know each other's, each teacher's classroom style. She takes time to compliment students and support staff, has an intuitive understanding of how to work with challenging student behaviors, and develops great relationships with families. Sue loves working with younger students and is always able to remain calm in escalated situations. She is very self-directed and able to handle issues when they arise. Her ability to problem solve and think quickly are attributes that contribute to her success. Sue is always ready with a book, tool, or suggestion and always seems to be in the right place at the right time to help a student or a colleague in need. If it sounds like Sue is one in a million, it's true and she's right here with us tonight. We are so proud and happy that Sue is a representative and champion for all Oakwood Elementary students. Sue, congratulations.
I think my family would disagree with a lot of those comments is all I can say, but I appreciate the opportunity to be at Oakwood. All of our kids went through Oakwood. At times we've had challenges with different students, different perhaps staff, and what's going on right now with all of our buildings sometimes is a challenge, but the staff at Oakwood, the support we get from you Dr. Anderson and just everyone makes the job a lot easier and each challenge easier to handle, so thank you very much.
And next we'll be recognizing two Employees of the Month from Wayzata High School and I would like to invite Amanda Layden and Eric Swenson to come forward, please. I saw both of them sneaking in earlier. I'll read the script again for each of these two Employees of the Month and then we'll present them with their certificate and have a photo. Amanda is in her 12th year as a science teacher at Wayzata High School and currently chairs the Science Department, directs Honors Mentor Connection, advises a world-class science bowl team, and teaches AP Biology. Amanda's respect and regard for the teachers and students at Wayzata High School is commendable. She contributes positively to the work of her team and to school-wide goals. She devotes a considerable amount of personal and professional energy to ensuring Wayzata High School is a place where students can achieve incredible things emphasized by her team's 2019 Science Bowl National Championship victory. She continues to exhibit all of the skills, attitudes, and values we desire in people and especially educators. She takes responsibility for her role as a scientist, teacher, and department leader and then goes beyond. When department or school-wide challenges arise, Amanda immediately becomes part of the solution. Amanda has made every effort to grow and develop into the finest educator she can be and it shows daily in the success of her current and former students. Congratulations Amanda. And our next Employee of the Month from Wayzata High School this evening is Eric Swenson. Eric is in his fourth year as Dean of Students at Wayzata High School. In Eric's role as Dean, he consistently develops strong and positive relationships with all of the students he interacts with, in and out of his alphabet assignment. He provides a welcome perspective to administrative work given his 18 years as a classroom teacher, both here at Wayzata and out of state. Eric is an integral leader of the Wayzata Intervention Network, personally responsible for coordinating all staff presentations to bring best practices in behavioral support and instruction to staff throughout the building. Eric's dedication to students and his incredible work ethic are invaluable. No matter the task, he tackles all of his responsibilities with professionalism and a positive attitude. He is an asset to his students and colleagues and to the Wayzata community as a whole. Congratulations Eric on being an Employee of the Month. Well done. And our next recognition that I know many of you are here for this evening is for our 32 students who have been named National Merit Scholar semifinalists. So before I read more from the script and work our way toward inviting students forward and inviting Amy Swenson here in just a moment, I just wanted to congratulate you in a very heartfelt manner to all of our students, the parents who are here, and grandparents, other supportive adults, all of the teachers that have been recognized by our National Merit semifinalists. It's just an incredible accomplishment and for us to have 32 students with that designation is just incredible and off the charts, so I commend you and compliment you and thank you for all of your hard work because I'm pretty sure that just didn't happen by thumbing through your books and stumbling through your school days. I know that it was incredibly hard work and you have admirable drive and motivation, so I want to compliment you for that and encourage you to continue on that journey moving forward. So we're very honored to have all of you here tonight as our guests to celebrate together and to recognize these wonderful individuals that are here with us. I always like to share a little bit on the front end of this in regard to establishing sort of the context of this to help everybody, not only those in attendance, you probably mostly already know how unique of a recognition this is, but for those who are going to be watching the board meetings on a delayed broadcast, it's important for them to know this as well. So I'd like to share the following. Every year about 1.6 million juniors enter the National Merit Scholar Program by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. The nationwide pool of semifinalists representing less than 1% of US high school seniors includes the highest scoring entrance in each state. From the approximately 16,000 semifinalists, about 15,000 are expected to advance to the finalist level in February. All National Merit Scholarship winners will be selected from this group of finalists and will be announced beginning in April. Again, congratulations to each and every one of you for this incredible accomplishment. At this time, I'd like to invite Amy Swenson forward, our gifted and talented coordinator here at the high school, to share more about the 32 students we are honoring tonight and the teachers that these students have chosen to honor for the positive impact that they've had during their, both as learners and as, in their personal lives. Before we do that however, I'm going to invite the school board and staff that are on the stage to make yourself at home and comfortable in the plush seats and then you can enjoy and get the same visual rather than having to look down on top of our National Merit semifinalists. So we'll take a moment to kind of reposition and then I'll turn it over to Amy. Amy, thank you.
So my name is Amy Swenson and I'm the gifted and talented coordinator for Wayzata High School and I too would like to extend my congratulations to each of our National Merit semifinalists. I'm going to invite the 2019 National Merit Scholar semifinalist to the stage to be recognized, so in just a minute I'll have you come up and walk your way through and then stand behind the tables here. Avi Astana. We'll hold our applause. Jacob Malin. Ren Paulson. Caroline Sasson. Angela Sun. And these are our 2019 National Merit Scholar semifinalists.
Kelly is really special to me because she always talked to us as like people or like friends.
And if you had told me coming into the high school that reenacting Romeo and Juliet would have been one of my favorite projects during the four-year journey, I would have told you were crazy, but here we are thanks to Ms. Kelly.
So it was pretty hard for me to get everything on like deadlines, but it never felt like overwhelming, you know? Because other classes when it's hard, you feel kind of overwhelmed, you're sort of caught up in all the pressure. But for her classes it's sort of like, yeah, you're overwhelmed, but it's fun because you're being challenged and it's like it's interesting and exciting and you get good feedback.
It was the first class that I was ever not doing like super great in and she was just super helpful and she noticed that I was freaking out and she just, she took me aside and she was like, "You're gonna do fine, you're gonna be okay." And then I've had her, every year since then I had her sophomore year and junior year and I'm TA-ing for her this year and I just really can't imagine a year without Ms. Kelly as my teacher, so I decided that I had to TA for her. It just felt like we were like friends and not just like, she's a teacher that I really like and I really just like being in her class because of that and like talking to her because of that. When I have problems or like, whether it be like academic or personal, I've always gone to her and she's been willing to listen and even more importantly, she tries to understand. So I really admire her for that. I love her. I love you. Wow.
I walked into physics expecting it would be like another boring science class or math class, but Mrs. Campbell-Clett made the class actually one of my favorite in my junior year because she was really patient with all of my questions and she made sure to have like everyone really understand the concepts and make learning fun.
She would do many demonstrations throughout the class, such as there was one friction lab where she helped us conceptually understand the idea of friction and how that relates to the forces.
My favorite part was the weekly shout-outs she did. Students could write on a sheet of paper a fellow student's name and something cool they did for them, put in a little box on Friday at the beginning of class, who got shout-outs and gave people candy if they got a shout-out. This is really fun, winter class tried to exploit the system by writing shout-outs to the entire class so we all could get candy.
Mr. Johnson, my Honors English IX teacher, and he just made the transition to high school a lot easier for me. That was my fourth block class and I remember just being like very happy every time I walked into that classroom.
He like taught me how to manage my time really wisely and he taught me not to be like scared of challenges and to take them like head-on.
Even though I've taken like some hard classes, I still think that Honors IX English has been like undoubtedly the hardest class I've taken throughout my high school career, but even though it was like really hard, I found it really enjoyable.
It's basically the reason I'm, I get excited to walk into the orchestra room every other day. Mr. Getch helped me grow from this really timid freshman who didn't really know what she was doing to a leader in that class, which was really fun.
It's been a great time improving, expressing my art form, just getting a better musical sense and connecting with others in orchestra as well. And so just have him being there to always support me as I've been going through high school, because he also talks to me with other things besides orchestra too, has just been a really great time.
Mrs. Grock was the one who really pulled that love for science out of me and she was the one who pushed me to work harder, to really bring the best out of me and to actually bring that interest for science, for chemistry.
We did a lab where we like separated the components of milk. So like milk has like proteins, fats, and carbs and then we kind of like separated them all out and we examined like all the different components. I do drink milk. It wasn't gross, it was just interesting.
I nominated Mrs. Rineer and she taught sci-fi fantasy. All of the books were really fun, like I specifically remember she organized a classroom movie visit to see Avengers Endgame because it was, we were just learning the sci-fi unit at that time.
For Ms. Cardona's class, I really loved the way that it was structured. Like I remember the first day, it was like really weird, like she didn't say a single word and just had us, the students, like follow directions on the board and organize our own discussions, but I think throughout the entire class that I had with her, it was incredibly unique because a lot of the discussions were entirely student-driven and I remember we had to like orchestrate, direct, act, our own play at the end of the term.
I picked Mr. Patel because I like went into the class not really like knowing what I wanted to do with my life and like what I wanted to major in in college and I had him for macroeconomics and microeconomics. And after the class, I realized that my intended major was going to be economics because I just really liked what we were learning in the course and he was a good teacher.
I nominated Mrs. Van Horn because of the spirit of communication that she really helped me develop and embody in everything that I do today. I used to go and talk to her about her life and really focus on building that personal connection with her, just as she focused on building it with us.
Mr. Pedersen, I mean first off, I just gotta say thank you for teaching me what a Roth IRA is. I don't think a lot of 17-year-olds can say that they started saving for retirement, but I can, so that's pretty awesome. Besides that, I really enjoyed his coursework too. Absolutely fantastic teacher and really just brought like another, he was a great example of just a super charismatic guy who brought a lot of positive energy to class each day.
Mr. Pronczynski, he would always kind of come off as a little abrasive, but in a really funny way that was really relatable and personable to the students. So he would also like talk to students outside of class and really willing to help, but I think that it was his teaching style, this abrasive manner, that really made you not only pay attention to what he had to say, but also pay attention to, you know, him and I think that that made his teaching really impactful.
Mr. Burnt was one of my favorite teachers because of the way that he could kind of get the whole class involved and tell stories about the content that made it a lot more relatable and fun to learn about.
I nominated Mr. Fink because he has a real passion for teaching. I think Mr. Fink made it really enjoyable and like, it was like, the concepts were easy to understand through his teaching.
I nominated Ms. Kaki who taught me AP Lit and I really appreciated her kindness and supportiveness. She really cultivated a welcoming classroom environment where I felt comfortable to share all my ideas and one thing I'll never forget about her class is just playing charades at the end.
I had Mr. Skirbitz for AP Calculus in 11th grade and then he's also been my math team coach for all four years of high school. He taught me like a lot of applications about math. So I remember one time I had learned about like, it's a seven-year approximation in economics, like seven divided by the interest rate will give you the number of years it takes for an investment to double. So like, we were also learning about Taylor series in math at that time and I had like, I was talking with him, like I think there's a connection between Taylor series and the seven-year rule and he was like, "Yes, you're right." And then he like explained it to me pretty well. I was impressed like how much he knew about that.
I had Ms. Christensen as my sophomore year English teacher and she's also my speech coach. And she had this kind of contagious passion when she taught that made me want to read and made me want to write and every interaction, discussion, and conversation we still have today, even through speech and just when I go visit her, I'm always left with a smile on my face.
Mr. Goodrich was super motivational and he always was really supportive of the whole class and he really believed in our success. And... And he prepared us for the AP test super well. He sometimes let us like bring in food and throw a little party and that really brought the class together. It was really a community.
Starting out in the class, I had no real interest in biology, but Ms. Layden totally flipped the scale for me. Her passion carried over and it helped me appreciate everything that happens in the biomedical field.
And I was really sure what I was doing. I didn't know much about biology, but she really like taught me a lot and helped me like do good in both that test out and in AP Bio.
For one part of the cell, the lysosome, it like breaks apart different particles. And so she would just randomly go like lysosome. And so like a karate chop. And so that really helped us remember what a lysosome does because it's super memorable.
I nominated Mrs. Brenke and Mrs. Layden and these two teachers have been much more than just teachers for me, they have also been mentors. I've gotten a chance to know both of these individuals really, really well through my involvement in Science Bowl. And I owe a lot to them for where I am today. Their willingness to give me chances and their, you know, faith in my ability has really allowed me to express myself and grow as an individual.
Coming into her class every day, it made me more interested in science. Like I can specifically remember learning about like how the tectonic plates move and then how like subduction works and stuff like that, but all because of her class.
When I first came into middle school, I was really new and I had missed a week. And I had transferred districts, so I really didn't know anybody. I was pretty shy, I was pretty introverted at the start. And Mr. Herzak really helped me integrate into the community at Wayzetta. I always remember his smiley power, which is basically just saying spread happiness. It's an ideology I still carry with me today.
I remember one time when he was teaching us about the principle of density, he just crammed as many gummy bears as he could into his mouth. So even after I've taken a lot of other science classes, when I think of density, I still think of that particular class.
For him, a chemical equation wasn't just a couple letters on a sheet of paper, but it was like Mentos and a Diet Coke or bending a Wiki straw, or Wiki stick. And he also, at Wolfridge, after trekking miles in the snow, snowshoeing through the snow, he gave everyone a liquor stick. So that was, he always tries to be very kind to his students.
I'll never forget when he lip-synced to Eye the Tiger at the Wolfridge Talent Show.
He was the first teacher who really made me enjoy learning. And even if the content wasn't particularly enjoyable, he always made it interesting. He's probably like, out of the first eight years of my educational experience, probably the most like memorable teacher out of all of them.
I nominated Mrs. Ferens from Kimberly Lane. She was a former Vision 21 teacher. And I nominated her because she taught us how to challenge ourselves and she also introduced us to a lot of different concepts that she knew were difficult, but she believed that we could tackle.
She always taught us in things that weren't like necessarily conventional curriculum. We were taught how to do strange puzzles or problem-solving. We read a lot of interesting books that most elementary schoolers probably would never have thought to read.
I chose Mr. Bodine because I remember a lot of things that I don't love about seventh grade, but advanced math, that was the class that he taught, was never one of them. Like that was one of my favorite classes, which is strange for a middle school math class. I remember that he taught me the quadratic formula song and that has stuck with me literally for every single time I have to use it. X equals negative B plus or minus square root of V squared minus four A D all over two A.
I just liked that. He was a good teacher and he made math like more fun and understandable, like before seventh grade, which is when I had him. I never really liked math, but he made it more fun and approachable, I guess.
Mr. Eichlinger was like my homeroom teacher because we only had two teachers on Green Team versus everybody else had four because Green Team was the bad one. And then, I don't know, Mr., he was like my homeroom teacher and I just remember like having a lot of fun in his class. And he made school more fun for me and like less about like hard work.
So I was a new student entering the first grade. I had come from the Osseo Maple Grove District. And I was, you know, a bit nervous about starting a new school, especially when all of my friends at the time were still in the Osseo Maple Grove School District. And to be quite honest, I was very skeptical about going to a Wayzetta public school, but Ms. Anger-Bretson really made me feel welcome. And really made me feel like Wayzetta was a good place for me and I owe a lot of my appreciation of Wayzetta public schools to her.
I just remember really liking school from an early age because of her class. I really enjoyed it. A lot of my friends from there, I still am friends with to this day. For specific things, I remember doing different science experiments and crafts that I just really enjoyed and yeah, I really loved it.
Mr. Miller was my seventh grade US history teacher. And he was one of my favorite teachers in middle school because he was enthusiastic for every single lesson. He made learning fun and he helped all of his students develop a really good work ethic because he had really high expectations for all of us.
I remember one time we were learning about the causes of World War I and he dressed up as, it was the guy who murdered the Archduke of Austria-Hungary. It was really cool, yeah. He had like an accent and everything. And it just made like history really come to life for us. It made us see like what history was. And I just remember that he was always so entertaining and hilarious.
Honestly, Ms. Ringet was just such a kind, positive influence on my life and her daughter's great. I'm friends with her daughter and I love her and I love how kind she is. She brings laughter to everyone and props her for wearing heels every single day during class. I remember that. And Hot Chocolate Fridays because there are so many good memories and I just love that class.
Mr. Martin, to be honest, I don't remember a lot of the stuff that I learned about in fifth grade because it was so long ago. But I just remember that he made our class super fun, super inviting, and it just was kind of a great atmosphere. And the best friends that I still have were people that I met in his class.
Mrs. Carson was my fourth grade teacher and I just remember that she went like super out of her way to make sure I liked what we were doing in class and I was engaged. She noticed that I wasn't really like focusing in class and I wasn't like, like super engaged with what we were learning. And so I remember she like made a project for me to like, that I would like be interested in and she went super out of her way to make sure I was having fun and learn.
I nominated Mrs. Donahue. I had her in second grade at Kimberly Lane. She was probably the first teacher who taught me to truly love learning. She had this patience and commitment around, that surrounded her classroom that I really admired. I feel like she instilled a confidence in me to, that I could do whatever I wanted if I put my mind to it. And she also gave really good hugs.
Mr. Deanie, he was such a charismatic guy, without a doubt. He just brought like one of the best energies to a classroom that I've ever seen from a teacher. He did this thing called like the daily geography question where like everyone would like come in to the class. And like he'd just throw up a couple random pictures and they'd be like completely ridiculously like hard to guess pictures of like a certain country. And like I would always nail it every time. Like I'd see like a picture of a yurt and I'd be like, that's Mongolia. You know what I mean?
Mrs. Granberg was one of those rare elementary teachers that really knew you, even though she has a whole bunch of kids. She knew I loved reading more than anything else, so she would actually give me books to read if I finished something early. And the other thing Mrs. Granberg did for the first time was she really challenged me. So if I, if I finished something early in the classroom, she'd give me something harder to do and then something harder to do after that, which was really fun.
Mrs. Strieb was also really helpful because in eighth grade, so I had an essay, like the last essay of the year. And I was like not a very good essay writer. So Mrs. Strieb like kind of took me like one-on-one and helped me really harness and like develop my essay writing skills, which has really like helped me throughout my high school journey so far.
Mr. Knudsen was my eighth grade communications teacher. And it got me really interested into things in that area of interest as well, such as debate and speak, public speaking and other things like that. And he was a really funny teacher and I got to know him more through youth and government as well.
Mrs. Bradshaw goes back a long way to elementary school, actually. When I first entered Greenwood, I was not, I was not a part, I didn't particularly enjoy reading. I remember she was the one who introduced me to these masterpieces of popular fiction such as Percy Jackson, Harry Potter, and Hoot. And she was really the one who would always be there to support me even when I felt down or when I felt like I couldn't do this anymore in elementary school. And her impacts really reverberate to this day.
Mr. Blumer from Wayzetta Central Middle School, he was my sixth grade social studies teacher and homeroom teacher. And he's one of my favorites because of his personality was just always strong and he always was able to set me on the right path. And whenever I wasn't feeling basically up to speed or I was kind of falling behind, he would always help me and make sure that I knew where I wanted to go. And so that was, really meant a lot to me.
...work in our effort to enhance our overall communication efforts at Wayzetta High School by way of the WHS Hub. But before he does, I'd like to introduce to the board the high school narrative. When you think of a narrative, you think of a sequence of events, a story or a plot. A narrative is what you want others to know about you. It's what you're most proud to proclaim. It's the elevator speech you provide when someone asks you about your work. It's personal. More importantly, a narrative holds you accountable to the work as it becomes your story or what you proclaim to be true. This past summer, the high school building instructional leadership team comprised of teachers and administrators took on the task of writing the Wayzetta High School narrative. Each teacher has a copy of this narrative to hang in their classroom and it's posted throughout the building. At this time, I'd like to play for you their finished product. We are Wayzetta. We are proud to be the largest high school in the state of Minnesota. We make big feel small by fostering authentic relationships, personalized supports, and honoring student voice. Everyone has a home at Wayzetta High School. Everyone belongs. We are an essential part of an outstanding community. With its support and trust, we collaborate, innovate, and embrace the challenges of education in an ever-changing world, both within our hallways and beyond. We are a diverse community of learners, unified and working hard to achieve meaningful goals, both personal and shared. We celebrate the unique experiences, skills, and values of our school community. And we are dedicated to providing equitable opportunities for all. We provide a world-class education that promotes the development of the whole person, scholarship, and character. Excellence at Wayzetta High School is not defined by being the best in the world, but being the best for the world. We are Wayzetta. We're here for you. A copy of that narrative is in front of you this evening. I'm also sharing with you the narrative for our student support teams. As you know, we restructured our student support teams in recent years to provide more aligned and tighter levels of support for our students and their families. With four teams now in place, we thought they too would benefit from writing a narrative. So their story, the work that they own, and the support they provide is clear for our school community to understand. In addition to these two narratives, many of our PLCs are establishing their own narratives aligned to our school narrative to better tell the story of their work as it correlates to job-like classes. This process has inspired a more aligned and consistent effort between the many people and processes that help us have the success we all benefit from here at Wayzetta High School. And it's an integral part of the communication plan, as is the WHS Hub, which I will now turn over to Mr. Shepherd.
I've got a few screenshots that I'm gonna walk through. But a few years ago, we had a challenge. When we moved to a late start, we decided that we were going to introduce an intervention period between first block and second block. And with that comes managing, at the time, about thirty-four hundred students. So what we did was we developed an app that helps us manage that time, but it's really, really become so much more. So what you can see up on the screen is, is kind of a sample of what our homepage looks like. Ultimately, this is the teacher and the administrator interface that we use on a daily basis. I'd like to go over a few statistics with you, just to highlight what we have offered through this opportunity. On average, we have about one thousand two hundred students requested for My Time each week. Those requests go through this hub that we've created, allows teachers to set up sessions to request students for interventions. Allows teachers to offer seminars where they can invite an entire class to participate in some type of an experience that they want to offer. Or they can offer both. And we've just opened the opportunity for them to offer building-wide sessions such as trauma-informed yoga. Or we just offered a writer's workshop to help students prepare their college essays as they're applying for their colleges. You can see some of those statistics related to that, but it's really exciting to see that our teachers are offering these opportunities on a weekly basis during My Time. And that so many students are being requested. Over the last two years, after implementing this product, we developed some more tools within it. We have an academic resource center down on our first floor that provides student support throughout the school day. A lot of test accommodations are delivered through this portal. As of, at the end of October, we have over eight hundred requests that have gone through that room, again managed within our hub. We added a feature called teacher availability. Teachers go in each week and they let students and parents know what days they're available before and after school. Again, to streamline that communication of knowing when support's available for students. We've also introduced a contact log. The goal of this was to enhance school-to-home communication, but also help teachers collaborate on that process. So teachers go in there to share general information, concerns, and celebrations about students that they've communicated home in a collaborative fashion tied to each student's account. So that our teachers know the efforts of the other teachers and they can partner together at times when it's difficult to do so, especially in a building our size. And last but not least, our most recent development has been digital hall passes. In an effort to keep students in class more often, or as often as possible, we have moved over three thousand five hundred hall passes so far this school year in about a couple of weeks, from paper passes to digital hall passes. With almost a thousand students sign up to receive those through texts, the other students still receive them through their iPads. So it's been a really exciting opportunity to grow this program. Originally, the program was called My Time and we had to rebrand it a couple of weeks ago to be called the Hub, because it's become so much more than just that. I have an example up there of what a teacher availability looks like. It's got a portal where we can see how many teachers are available before and after school each day. From the administration and the student support side, we can drill into each day. And if we have a student who's looking for math support and their math teacher may not be available, we can pull this up and we can show them all of the math teachers that would be available before or after school that day to further support them. And this is a sample email that actually went to Scott, but you can see that each of his students' requests were in the very first part of that email. And then teacher availability is in the second half, again to streamline those communications home on a weekly basis. Some of you, I'm sure, have received them as well, for those of you that have students. This is a sample of our school-to-home communication log. We have a goal in our site improvement plan this year to increase the number of celebration messages that we're sending home. To really increase that, make sure that we're increasing our school-to-home communication, but that we're also making a positive contribution to that. So this is documented through this process, again in collaboration with teachers. Here's a sample of our academic resource center scheduler. We have before and after-school sessions in addition to during the school day. This allows teachers to sign their students up to go to this support center where we have academic mentors and student tutors available. In addition to having a student supervisor pair to support students. But years ago, we had a request that students wanted to be able to sign up, so they can now do that as well. This would be a sample of our digital hall pass portal. We have on average almost eighteen college visits on any given day. That was one piece that we really wanted to help students better understand and opt into on days that they're here. So that kind of started the ball rolling with digital hall passes because we had so much foot traffic to see those college reps. And now it's just become so much more with out-of-building passes, requests for student passes. Again, to help students be in class more often and not have to come into the office to pick up passes and be out of class. The last thing that I'll share in terms of a screenshot is that root. Our goal with creating this product has now become, and will stay, a goal of creating more opportunities to collaborate with teachers and enhance school-to-home communication with our parents and guardians and students. Each student's profile really is the root, so teachers can collaborate to see what support sessions, interventions that student is taking advantage of. What does the context home look like? Are they enrolled in our after-school program? Are they utilizing our academic resource center and so much more? Last but not least, I'll share that I'm super excited. We just received the local government innovation award through the University of Minnesota and partnered with Humphrey School. It's put together through the Bush Foundation, but this was just released a couple of It's put together through the Bush Foundation, but this was just released a couple of weeks ago, so pretty pumped.
I'll have to stay up here. As you can see, school-to-home communication has become more than just parent-teacher conferences or your typical Skyward notifications that we routinely have sent home over the years. It's really an integral part of our work and partnering with our families to have greater influence in the work that we do with their students. And so we'll open up for questions at this time.
All right. Well, thank you so much, and congratulations once again on the receiving of the Local Innovation Award. Board colleagues, questions and comments? Andrea.
Congratulations. It's very exciting. I have a quick question about, as a parent of a high schooler, I know I've gotten messages before from Skyward, and so then will it kind of transition to getting messages through the hub instead?
Yeah.
Or will it be both?
Both and. Yeah, both and.
Both and, okay.
Yeah, currently, teachers are documenting it in both places, but they now, through the hub, can send a communication right from there to the parent.
Okay.
Without having to double that effort.
Yeah. Thanks. So I have a question. I'm a little frightened that I'm going to be doing my first high school registration starting in January. Will you have some, are you doing some onboarding and training too for those of us that will be finding our way as parents?
This is our first year that students and parents will be able to sign into it. That's a feature that we worked on last year, so there will be more training to come related to what is all involved in the parent's life.
Great. Thank you. Well, and very cool to hear all the opportunities for student voice and the ways that you integrated the feedback that they gave you into that, so. Okay, well, thank you for joining us. Thank you for welcoming us at the high school this evening, and we look forward to hearing and seeing more about it. Well, the next item on our agenda, I'm looking for Dr. Johnson once again, because we go from exciting things like national merit scholars and hub to policies.
Okay, I'm just going to work from right here. Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Anderson. The policies and regulations you have before you tonight for consideration were reviewed using the Minnesota School Board Association Model Policy were available by the Teaching and Learning Department and Building Principals. A final review was completed by the Policy Committee of the School Board. The changes are indicated by an underlined or strike-through notation. The policies for consideration this evening are 502 student discipline, 503 compulsory attendance, 504 student release from school, 505 entrance age, 507 student attendance areas, and 510 student sex nondiscrimination. The recommended action is listed below.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Board colleagues, all of the policies were summarized in your cover page and contained in full in the board packet, and the recommended action is to approve policies 501, 502, 503, or I'm sorry, 5, not 501, I'm sorry, 502, 503, 504, 505, 507, and 510. Is there a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, I move to approve policy 502 for first reading, and policies 503 through 510 for second reading and final approval.
I would second.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded to move policy 502 for first reading and to move policies 503, 504, 505, 507, and 510 for first and final reading. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, I would just like to underscore a thanks to the Teaching and Learning Department and all of the Building Principals and other staff members that were active and helping us to review these policies, some of which are annual reviews and some which come through our regular policy cycle. Hearing no additional discussion, all in favor of the, once again, the recommended action is to approve 502 for first reading, and policies 503, 504, 505, 507, and 510 for first and final approval. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Abstentions, motion carries.
Madam Chair, if I could just also add, I'd like to thank Ashley Winter and Director Cheryl Polzin and Andrea Keen for their additional help on these policies. It was much appreciated.
Thanks. Okay, great. Well, thank you all, and we have some policies. The next item on the agenda, Dr. Johnson, you just are on a roll, is an approval of the 2020-2021 school day's calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board and Superintendent Anderson. The school district calendar is prepared each year by the Calendar Committee. The committee is composed of one teacher representative from each school site, including early childhood, two parent representatives from the district Parent Liaison Committee, and one resource teacher from Teaching and Learning. The executive director of Teaching and Learning chairs the committee. The committee meets and provides input on the development of a new school calendar. Teaching and Learning takes the input and creates different versions of the calendar for the committee to review. The committee reviews the draft calendars and decides which versions to move forward for teacher-parent consideration. Each site shares the calendar with the teachers, and each site comes to a consensus for one calendar. The calendar with the most support moves forward to the school board for consideration. A calendar parameters that guides our decision-making is to start school after Labor Day, 184 teacher workdays, the student days, 169.5 for grades K through 5, 171.5 for grades 6 through 11, and 165.5 for grades 12. Two scheduled elementary teacher planning days, scheduled parent-teacher conferences. We include 10 holidays. We try to have equal number of days between quarters and semesters. We like to end in early June, and a week-long spring break. The recommended action for the calendar is listed below.
Okay. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to adopt the proposed calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Keen.
I just wanted to comment that it took an enormous amount of collaboration, time, and effort to put this calendar together. I would like to thank Stacy Voss and the Parent-Teacher Conference Task Force for analyzing our past practices, creating a survey to solicit feedback from parents and teachers, articulating a clear purpose for conferences, and bringing forth their recommended calendar changes to the school board. I want to thank the teachers, administrators, and school board members on the teacher contract negotiations team, who worked to brainstorm ways that the critical issues such as the substitute teacher shortage, excellence in instruction, teacher well-being, effective professional development, and parent-teacher conference times that meet the needs of all families can be supported by our school calendar. I also wanted to thank the Calendar Committee led by Dr. Jill Johnson, who took all of these recommendations and worked all the pieces of the puzzle into the calendar that we're voting on tonight. Finally, I want to highlight the fact that this calendar is a pilot. We will be conducting a survey for parents and teachers in the future so that we have feedback for planning our next calendar, the 21-22 calendar.
All right, thank you. Other comments? I'd just like to underscore, as Andrea mentioned, this calendar has been through lots of conversations. We've talked about it in detail at a couple different work sessions. It's come through a number of the school board committees. I know it was discussed this summer in our work with the teachers and the Calendar Committee and the Teaching and Learning and the Human Resources Offices have really spent a lot of time and effort in it. Our families will notice that it does have a couple changes in it or some things that we're doing differently. That's also detailed in the board packet. And as a learning institution, we will learn from our decisions, and it's been an informed decision, and we will continue to work and study it. I too just want to underscore the thanks to Dr. Johnson and Ms. Voss and Mr. Westrom had a role in this, and the Calendar Committee, and everyone that was involved in that. Other comments or discussion? Okay, the recommended action is to adopt the proposed calendar for the 2020-2021 school year. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
No.
Abstentions? All right, motion carries. Okay. And I think we will now move. Thank you, Dr. Johnson, for all of your inputs. And now, Mr. Westrom.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have three items of business before you this evening. The first one is our monthly financial reports. You'll notice that enclosed for school board review and information are the following financial reports as of September, the investment summary report, an analysis of financial reports, a statement of revenues, and a statement of expenditures. Just a reminder that our fiscal year goes from July 1st through June 30th. Next week, a week from tonight, or a week from last night, on the 18th, we'll be inviting our independent certified public accountants to go over the financial results, and I can share with you that they are favorable for the year ended June 30th, 2019. And if you look at our financial reports through September 2019, you'll notice that everything is in alignment with budgets, and there are no unusual items noted. So no action is required on this matter, but I'd be happy to respond to any questions or move on to the next item.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Yep, okay.
Thank you. And just a reminder that we have a finance committee of the school board that pays particularly close attention to our financial matters, so I want to thank those members. The next item is a resolution canvassing returns of votes of the school district general election. The school district general election was held on November 5th, 2019, to elect four members of the school board. Election of four members of the school board for four-year terms effective on the first Monday in January 2019, with those receiving the highest number of votes are Cheryl Polzin with 1,441 votes, Linda A. Cohen with 1,425 votes, Benita Lucky with 1,133 votes, and Siann Falconer with 1,075 votes. The recommended action is before you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Westrom. Board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the resolution canvassing the returns of votes of the school district general election. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved, and I recommend that we waive the reading of the resolution.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Well, I would just like to congratulate our three incumbents and our new board member, Ms. Falconer, so Ms. Polzin, Dr. Cohen, Ms. Lucky, and Ms. Falconer. Congratulations and welcome back. And to Siann, welcome to the Wasata School Board. It'll be so exciting. Okay. There are no other discussions. This is a roll call vote.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Thank you. Our next item is also a resolution authorizing the issuance of certificates of election and directing the school district clerk to perform other related election duties. The school district general election that was held, where four members of the school board were voted in for a four-year term commencing on the first Monday in January 2020, with the four candidates receiving the highest number of votes, once again, Linda A. Cohen, Siann Falconer, Benita Lucky, and Cheryl Polzin. Another resolution, which is attached, authorizes the school district clerk to issue the certificates of election once the time to contest the election is passed and the candidates have filed all required campaign financial reports. So the recommended action is before you.
Okay, board colleagues, the recommended action is to approve the resolution to issue the certificates of election and direct the school district clerk to perform other related election duties. Is there a motion to that effect?
I so move, and move that we waive the reading, please.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Well, once again, I would like to say thank, congratulations to our board colleagues, but I also would really like to send a sincere thank you to the other candidates that filed and ran an excellent campaign. We were very fortunate to have eight community members step up to ask to serve our school district. Each one of them displayed an immense amount of passion and commitment to education and to our community. We are so fortunate to live in a community where people want to serve, and we look forward to working with those candidates and anyone else that's interested in working alongside the school district. So on behalf of the board and the district, thank you to the candidates, and thank you to all of the voters who participated in this election process.
So roll call vote. Benita Lucky.
Yes.
Chris McCullough, yes. Cheryl Polzin.
Yes.
Eric Brown.
Yes.
Linda Cohen.
Yes.
Andrea Keen.
Yes.
And Chair Johansson.
Yes. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. That's it this evening.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Westrom. That was exciting activities. There are no items under Human Resources tonight. We have no other board action, but we do have a board report, and so I would like to turn it over to Benita Lucky, who's the chair of our Superintendent Review Committee.
Okay, thank you so much. First of all, I'd like to thank the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, which is Eric Brown and Linda Cohen, I myself, so thank you very much for the work this year. Just a few comments, and then I'm going to read the official document for the records. We had a really good time in having direct conversation, providing feedback regarding superintendent's activities and performance. We talked a lot about several themes. We talked a little more about opportunities, and I think we came to a good conclusion as board members to move forward with next steps for Dr. Anderson. We also had an opportunity to meet on Monday, September 16th, to go to Grisley to talk with Dr. Anderson very candidly about things that are really working well, things of opportunities, and then to ask him about what's next for him. So I will read the official document for Dr. Anderson and for the community. On Wednesday, September 7th, 2019, the Wasata Public School District School Board went into closed session pursuant to Minnesota State Section 13D.05 subdivision 3A to evaluate the performance of Superintendent Anderson, Chase Anderson. Superintendent Anderson's annual performance evaluation was for the period of July 1st, 2018, through June 30th, 2019. The review was based on board members' input on eight questions in order to provide feedback to Superintendent Anderson on his performance on behalf of the district. Feedback and discussion were organized into four areas: district strengths, district opportunities, Dr. Anderson's strengths, and Dr. Anderson's personal growth opportunities. The feedback was overwhelmingly positive and expressed a strong reflection of the dedication and commitment Dr. Anderson has for the continued success of the Wasata Public School District. In regard to district strengths, the board praised Dr. Anderson's leadership in continuing to encourage the use of the strategic roadmap throughout the district. This was evident in the continued success in managing growth in the district, construction management, responsibility managing taxpayer money, community education changes, numerous achievements of students in and out of the classroom, and more. The board emphasized Dr. Anderson's leadership in hiring and integrating extremely qualified staff to implement and manage day-to-day operations. As the board discussed Dr. Anderson's personal strength, there was again tremendous appreciation for Dr. Anderson's wide array of skills. Some of those many skills discussed are as following: develops relationship and community trust, excellent communicator, builds trust, creative collaborative problem-solving, leadership presence and integrity, makes connections in all situations, just to name a few. The school board has a high degree of confidence in Dr. Anderson's leadership and appreciates the experience he has gained in his tenure at Wasata Public Schools. Along with the consistent approach, he brings in all facets of his role. The school board priority for 2019-2020 would be a measurable improvement in the achievement gap. We invite Dr. Anderson to propose a goal around the board's priority. In addition to the board's priorities goal, if Dr. Anderson chooses a second goal, the board would support. Other interests of the board are health and well-being, proper organizational structure, educational innovation, and excellence. In summary, the school board continues to appreciate the unique skills and exemplary dedication Dr. Anderson brings to the Wasata Public School District. The board looks forward to another successful year and encourages Dr. Anderson to continue to focus on the strategic roadmap. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, for all that you do. We really do appreciate you being the superintendent.
Thank you so much.
Any comments from the committee? Anything I omitted or left out? Nope. Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and thank you to Ms. Lucky, Mr. Brown, and Dr. Cohen. Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and thank you to Ms. Lucky, Mr. Brown, and Dr. Cohen for leading the board, the entire board, in the evaluation process. Okay, next is an audience opportunity to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the school board? No? Okay, fantastic. And this brings our meeting to a close. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No abstentions. The Wayzata Public Schools Board of Education regular meeting for Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, is adjourned.